And gentlemen, September the twenty-third meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Vanessa Ryapell. Ms. Ryapell?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Excuse me, folks, I think I've got something for Ms. Ryapell.
Did she have a bio?
Pardon me?
Did she have a bio? Everything is probably in his bio. Would you like to read the bio?
Yes.
Okay, come to the center right here for us, how are you? So I'm gonna read your Vanessa, I'm gonna read your bio while Mr. Cox comes down to give you your certificate, okay? Vanessa Ryapell is also a fifth grader at Graham Elementary School. Her mom is Jen and her dad is Scott. She is the youngest of six kids. Her interests include doing arts crafts, doing arts and crafts with her friends. Vanessa is looking forward to a career in teaching. Yay! She specifically wants to be an art teacher. That's great. Okay, we'll turn it over to Mr. Cox.
Great job Vanessa. Come over here so everyone can see you. This is an award provided by the Board of Education that says in recognition presented to Vanessa Ryapell, PD Graham Elementary School for participation in the flag ceremony during a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools, September twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Congratulations. Did you bring anybody with you this evening?
Um, yeah.
Who? Your sisters? Did you bring your teacher, your principal with you? Would you like to come home and get your picture taken? Would everyone like to join you?
She's gonna be right here. Are you going to right here? I'm gonna take them out to the van.
Come on, you're gonna go sit in the chair, okay? Because first you'll be a teacher and then you'll be a principal and then you'll be an assistant superintendent and then you'll be a superintendent. Come over here, I'm the center of the house.
Well, you gotta get the middle seat.
You wanna stand there in front of her, that way you really can see under the picture?
And you can even hold the gavel in your hand.
Sit in the messy chair.
Here's the gavel, that shows how important you are. Do you want us down here with you?
Yes, please. We got it? Good job. Good luck in your career.
Vanessa? Vanessa?
Kevin?
Can I do this one?
Thank you very much. Good job. Well, that was the first time we were led by a student in our pledge this school year. Happy to begin that this evening. Mrs. Medel is excused, as is Mr. Neal. I'm looking for Mr. Neal's calling the rule. I'll call the rule. Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Mrs. Walker?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
And I am present, David Cox, so let the record reflect that Carol Medel and Mark Neal are excused this evening.
Can I have a call sheet right here? Come here and get me a sheet.
You wanna go ahead and handle that? You haven't, you're not rusty?
No.
All right.
I'm a pro at this.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is three-nine-four-point-one-nine, which is recognition and presentation. Dr. Carnell?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to call Coach Linda Willem to the stand to talk about something, a little-known best secret about Wayne Westland. Could you go to the podium? Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me here. It is a topic that very few people do know about. We have, at John Glenn, have had an equestrian team for about twelve years now. It started out as a club sport and we were able to work our way up to a varsity sport so that our kids could get letters. So I made just a short presentation. Wayne High has a team as well, has for the last two years. Unfortunately, both of our kids from the John Glenn team and the Wayne High team are seniors this year, so we are looking for new kids hopefully to join for next year. On the governing body, just a little bit about what we do, the governing body for high school equestrian is the Michigan Interscholastic Horsemanship Association, or M.I.H.A., and it's been in existence since nineteen-seventy-four. So this occurs all over the state. There are about twenty different districts with all the schools from the state of Michigan competing in three district meets in the fall. The top two teams from each division, and there are four based on the number of riders that are on each team, and it can change from year to year. They advance through their district to the regional competition, which actually takes place next weekend up in Chiwasi. From the regionals, the top two teams from each district then go on to the state championships in Midland. We have, John Glenn has been there, so, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a minute. The breakdowns for the divisions is based on the number of riders. So Division A has ten or more riders, Division B five to ten, C has two to five, and Division D is one to two. We usually fall within the Division D situation of one to two riders. I have had, in the past, I had four years where I had five kids, so we were a Division C team and did quite well. In two thousand and seven, the John Glenn team was district champions in Division D. We finished reserve champion at regionals and placed tenth in the state championships that year. Pictures of the trophies that we have earned that year. In order to compete, each student needs access to a horse. You don't have to own your own, but you can lease one, borrow one, you know, use a friend's. You just have to have access to a horse, the appropriate equipment, and a way to transport the horse to the meets. Our riders are responsible for all of the costs in competing and for transporting their animals. We simply request that the school provide our riders with varsity letters, is the only expense that we have asked from the district. Equestrians are used to pay in their own way, so it's not a new thing. Each equestrian team consists of two components, the rider and the horse. And the partnership and trust, it has to be strong between the two, and you're dealing with a teammate that weighs over twelve-hundred pounds with a mind of its own and does what it wants regardless. So teamwork and trust is a big part of the component in an equestrian team. The John Glenn team started as a club, it is now considered a varsity sport. Last year was the first time Wayne Memorial had a team. This is their rider, Lily Myers, and her horse, Zola. This is the John Glenn rider, Coral Miller Sanchez, and her horse, Blaze. We compete in lots of different types of shows, of classes. There was showmanship, which is walking in hand. The last one was of a flag games competition called Gymkhana. Our team doing showmanship again. And then there are equitation classes where it's judged on how well the rider rides the horse, and that is the competitive part of it in the regular classes. There's also jumping, which our riders do not do. And then the only disadvantage to being in a one-person team is there is an event called two-man relay. Obviously, we can't do that, but our girls can compete in all of the other ones based on what their horse does and can do and what they're comfortable riding. We did get a plaque up at John Glenn last year. Our assistant, our A.D. was able to get that for us to post the championships that we have won at John Glenn. So that was very nice and appreciated. That's all I have. If you have any questions?
Questions from the board?
Comment? Thank you very much, Ms. Willem.
Thank you.
I recall some time ago when you were trying to get this thing off the ground and
Yes.
you've done it very successfully, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda, three-nine-five-point-one-nine, is citizens' comments on agenda items. Are there any citizens this evening that would like to comment on items that appear on tonight's agenda? They didn't, they don't. Okay, saying none, we're going to move to three-nine-six-point-one-nine, which is the consent agenda. Right here, motion? Support. Mrs. Walker, move to accept, supported by Dr. Weaver. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, Madam Vice President?
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Mr. Cox?
Yes. Motion passes. Three-nine-seven-point-one-nine is the Board of Education Committee reports, and Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you, sir. Well, the Finance Committee dealt with a number of items, and some of those are going to be on the agenda later this evening. At the meeting on September tenth, present myself, Mr. Mark Neal, Ms. Shawna Walker, Dr. Sue Carnell, Jill Simmons, Devon Kling, Gino Montane, Jamerson DeVall, Camara Phoenix. After welcoming everybody, Mr. Montane took over. He's the Energy Management Supervisor for the Maintenance and Operations Department, and he's requesting the purchase of seven new vehicles, which will be replacing vehicles that are between fifteen and seventeen years old. Five of those vehicles will be for the Maintenance and Operations, and two others will be for the Technology Department. Mr. Montane also requested that Franklin Middle School have some heating lines replaced. The damaged lines are underground and across space, and the process to locate and repair those lines would be too costly for the district to incur. Rerouting the heating lines would be the most effective route to take care of this repair, and that rerouting is going to be overhead. And since that was an emergency situation, I'm going to assume that the work has already been contracted and scheduled. Mr. DeVall, who's Technology Network Administrator from Technology, shared that a hundred and, actually, a hundred and sixty-nine switch upgrades have taken place already, and that the changes that still need to take place do not qualify for an E-rating fund. These charges are necessary before the new system, phone system, is installed and also for technological purposes. We're going to be installing forty-seven or forty-eight new switches, and five are going to be held in reserve in case there is a problem with one of the existing. These switches are expandable, and you can not only expand them, but you can add additional switches should the need arise. And again, none of our new technology works without these switches in place. Mr. Kling from the Business Department shared that he had added the workers' compensation to the investment report, which he did and is available now, and capital projects funds are above two percent, and the investment report is up to date. Our meeting adjourned at ten-thirty a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Questions on the Finance Committee report? Saying none, the next item on our agenda, three-nine-eight-point-one-nine, is review and approval of business and finance service items from Mrs. Simmons, beginning with the adjusting of property lines with the city of Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. President. On August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Wayne Westland Board Finance Committee met to discuss the property split agreement between Wayne Westland Community Schools, the City of Wayne, and Hyphre Recreation Center. An agreement has been drafted and reviewed by our district attorney, agreeing on the adjustment of the property lines located near Franklin Middle School. There is no cost for the adjustment of the property lines.
We all were informed of this, is there a motion on this issue?
I'd like to make the motion to accept.
Support.
Motion by Weaver, support by Walker. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Mr. Cox?
Yes. Motion passes. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am requesting Board approval to purchase a total of seven vehicles for the Maintenance and Operations and Technology Departments. The vehicles will be purchased in combination of a two-thousand-and-nineteen GMC Sierra fifteen-hundred, two-wheel-drive, double cab, two-thousand-and-nineteen GMC Savannah Cargo Van rear-wheel-drive, a two-thousand-and-nineteen GMC Terrain four-wheel-drive, four-door. This purchase is being made via the Oakland County Purchasing Division Cooperative Contract. These vehicles will replace other two-thousand-two to two-thousand-four vehicles that range from fifteen to seventeen years of age and are becoming unreliable and expensive to maintain and operate. The cost of this purchase will not exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. If approved, this will be charged to the general fund.
Thank you. Motion by Walker?
Support.
Support by Weaver?
Question.
Mr. Weaver?
I'm in full support of purchasing these vehicles. We do have a tendency to bad weather, and I'm just curious as to why these are not four-wheel drives. Okay, so they're not gonna push snow or anything like that? Thank you.
Is there other discussion? Other than I hope they look nice, because we'll be looking at them for about eighteen or twenty years. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Five-zero.
Motion passes. Next item, number three, which is the recommendation of purchase network electronics switching.
Thank you. I am requesting Board approval to purchase network electronics, or switches, for the Dyer Building as well as the Buildings and Grounds, Transportation, Rose Kennedy, William D. Ford Career Technical Center, Schweitzer, Stottlemyre, and Wildwood Locations. This purchase allow, all listed locations to be up to date with network connectivity, therefore allowing support for the installation of a new phone system, security cameras, and other network devices. This purchase is being made via the R.E.M.C. Save Competitive Bid Contract. The total cost of this project will not exceed one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and will be charged to the bond account.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept.
Support.
Move by Weaver, support by Hines. Is there discussion?
Walker.
I'm sorry. Move by Ms. Walker. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Five-zero.
Motion passes. Item four, is the previously mentioned heating lines.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on three quotes that were obtained and reviewed, I am requesting Board approval to abort the contract to repair and replace the heating lines at Franklin Middle School to Miller Bolt. The scope of the work included in the proposal will be to reroute the heating lines. The new lines will be installed overhead to the four areas that currently have no heat. All repair work will be completed on a second shift schedule and will not interrupt the school day. The estimated time to complete this job is two and one-half, two and a half weeks. All necessary permits will be in place, and all work includes a one-year parts and labor warranty. The total cost of this project will not exceed fifty-thousand dollars. This project will be charged to the sinking fund account.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Dr. Weaver, support. Support by Mr. Buckaloo, discussion. Ms. Hines? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver, show five-zero.
And thank Ms. Simmons. The last item on your agenda this evening is five.
Yes, I am proposing a resolution to appoint Devon Kling as the Director and Shanda Cleaves as the alternate Director to Mizel Joint Risk Management Trust in way of the need to read the enclosed resolution.
Is there a motion?
So move.
By Dr. Weaver, support by Mrs. Hines. Is there discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Five-zero.
Next item on our agenda is four-hundred-point-one-nine, the Head Start Report. I don't believe we, do we have a Head Start Report this evening?
Mr. President, with due respect, three-nine-nine-point-one-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was a. Okay. Yeah, three-nine-nine-point-one-nine, thanks, Dr. Weaver. Designation of delegates for the two-thousand-and-nineteen M.A.S.B. Delegate Assembly. Previously, members of the Board, Mr. Buckaloo, Ms. Medel, Mrs. Walker, Dr. Weaver, and Mrs. Hines were alternate. What is the Board's pleasure?
I'm registered to go. I'm registered to go.
I'm registered as well.
Okay.
Remember, I'll be alternate, because I think I'm going Saturday.
Okay, do we need, do we need two or three?
I'm registered, we need, I think we can have up to.
You probably can do the same ones if the same people are going. It'll be fine.
It'll teach Carol not to be absent on this night.
You know, Mr. Neal is also registered to go.
He can be an alternate, because we can have two alternates, so every, so Ms. Hines and Mr. Neal can be alternates, and the rest can be delegates. Or I can be alternate, either one.
Okay, so is there a motion for Mr. Buckaloo, Mrs. Medel, Mrs. Walker, Dr. Weaver, and Ms., to be delegates, and Hines and Neal to be alternates?
Support.
I'll make that motion. Motion by Buckaloo, support by Hines. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Five-zero.
Thank you. Now, four-hundred-point-one-nine Head Start Report.
The motion takes up the report. Can we have it in front of us?
Motion by Mrs. Walker, support by?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Is there discussion on the report? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Five-zero.
Just for the record, we have to just, it has to be stated that we accepted her Head Start Report and that it was passed.
Let the record reflect. Next item on our agenda is four-oh-two-point-one-nine, I'm sorry, four-oh-one-point-one-nine, which is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. I have a blue form filled out by Tove Pauling. Tove, excuse me, Tove, please come to the microphone, we're glad you came here tonight.
I'm Tove Pauling, I'm an employee for the school district, and I have just a few questions. What direction is the district going in regards to a superintendent? And are we extending Dr. Carnell's contract if she wants to stay? That's just me. And is the district searching for a new superintendent at this point? And then I have, the other question is just a thought, I mean, I thought about the, because next year will become, Adams will become a six, seven, eight building, and I just thought about this, and I shared this with Ms. Simmons and Dr. Carnell, too. Where will we get our eighth graders from? Are they gonna come back? Or, because I know they're gonna stay, I'm sorry, they're gonna stay at Franklin and Stevenson, so I'm trying to figure out where are we gonna get our batch of eighth graders from? That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board? Pastor Stevleton? Saying no, and we'll move on to review and recommendations of the Board of Education. Mr. Buckaloo?
Well, I'll start by saying thank you, Ms. Willem, for all you've done for us. For those who don't know it, there was no enthusiasm for creating an equestrian team. There certainly was no money that went along with it, and so the fact that we have one is just simply due to the fact that Ms. Willem put herself to the task without any enthusiasm or encouragement from anyone else in the district. This is totally her project and her success, and we thank you very, very much for that. Had a wonderful opportunity to try to keep up with Dr. Carnell on a tour of the buildings last week. The lady moves quick, much too quick for old, heavy guys like myself. But enjoyed the tour, enjoyed watching you, Dr. Carnell, interact with staff and also with students. It was a pleasure to see you at work and doing what you do so well. Appreciate it very much. Appreciate everything that you've done for us, I truly do. There is an event coming up on Wednesday. It's a red carpet premiere that's taking place at the State Wayne. Mr. Cox, I think, is gonna say a word or two more about that, but I will just simply say, if you listen to him and you like what you hear, it will be a wonderful event for you to attend. Proceeds go to support the Champions of Wayne program, and it's always a wonderful, wonderful evening. With that, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Mrs. Walker?
I'm just gonna say welcome back. Let's have a successful school year and be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to apologize to Dr. Carnell. I was not able to join the caravan because of my schedule, but I appreciated the effort and also appreciate so much the stability that you have brought to our district. And also, last month, Mr. President, I mentioned a strip of property that John Glenn students use to cut across that had not been mown several years ago now, institutional memory. Several years ago now, to many years ago now, there was a man standing in those weeds when a girl was cutting across. Nothing happened, but it scared the life out of her. And if that is our property, I'd like for that to be cut down. Thank you.
Dr. Weaver? Mrs. Hines?
Hi, I'd like to say congratulations to all, welcome back. Staff, I'm proud to see you, we're gonna have a great year. I was able to go to a couple of events, a football game over at Glenn, Friday Night Lights, and I got an opportunity to see the band at Wayne Memorial. I was so impressed, I'm so excited. They're doing a wonderful job, and I'd like to thank you too, Ms. William, for the question team. You answered the questions that I had, everything, like in that presentation, so that was wonderful. Anything I can do, if you need me to help promote, you know, I definitely would like to get that word out, because that's an awesome, awesome program that a lot of kids, they don't really know about. So thank you so much for, you know, providing that opportunity to our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines. I would like to, I would like to mirror what Mr. Buckaloo said about trying to keep up with Dr. Carnell. It is no easy feat. I was thinking we should have assigned segues, and maybe we could keep up with you with those. It was a real pleasure to be able to go around to the buildings. You know, Board of Education members that show up at buildings, it's fun for them, but the teachers really have a plan that day, and the plan isn't for Board of Education members to come crashing through the door and ask a lot of questions. And to be frank, if you're an administrator in one of our school buildings and all of a sudden a gang of Board of Education members show up, that's a little unsettling. You have your own job to do, and actually, we have a job to do, and we do our job up here. We, as much fun as it is being in the buildings, and it is a lot of fun, that's not really our place. I wish it were, because we, I really enjoyed it and I was very happy to do it, and frankly, I first served on the Board over twenty years ago, and I never had done it, because I knew that it was disruptive, and I tried to stay away from it because of that, but, boy, you could sure get to like that quickly, because it's wonderful. And what's wonderful about it is the synergy that you see between teachers and students. And when they don't, when you're in the hallway and they're talking in the classroom and you hear what they're saying, you know that what's going on in the classroom is exactly what should be going on in the classroom. They're interacting. I think the teachers are excited to be back, too, and the kids are obviously excited. The teachers have, some of them have decorated, especially in the younger grades, have decorated their classrooms. I don't remember my classroom ever looking like that, but it was just a very. I don't remember my classroom ever looking like that, but it was just a very welcoming environment, I thought, for the kids, and it was just delightful. And speaking of delightful, Dr. Carnell, you know, they say good things happen to good people. There must be a lot of good people in this school district, because you are a good thing that certainly happened for us. So I'm so grateful that you were available. I think it wasn't by chance, and what you've done for this school district and the people in this school district, I know will not be forgotten. It certainly won't be forgotten by me. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Vanessa Raiapell for coming up and leading us in the pledge. I was a little bit rusty, because we've gone all summer without having a student up to lead us in the pledge, but students are what we're all about here, so I was so glad to see her come back. I see in the, in the audience tonight, Pastor Don Stevelton and Pastor Matt Stevelton of the Gateway Family Worship Center. These are two wonderful Westland neighbors that have decided that they're, they can give of their time to help sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade boys with a basketball program. They're calling it the Full Court Boys Basketball Camp, and it's available to any sixth, seventh, eighth, or ninth-grade boys. And all you have to do is contact the Gateway Family Worship Center, or you could call the board office and get in touch with me, and I'll certainly explain to you how to get in touch with them. Out of the goodness of their heart, they decided to put together a program where, though it uses basketball, the purpose of it is to mentor young men and get them working together as a team. And it's a great effort, and a lot of Westland charities have been involved. Dr. Townsend, you were there. Wayne Westland Schools were represented by Maria Mitter and yourself, also representatives from the Westland Community Foundation, the Wayne Ford Civic League, the Rotary. I think that if more people knew about it, there would be more people there. It just shows you that the city is excited about coming together to help children, and I'd really like to thank you, Pastor Matt and Pastor Don, for your leadership on this. I know it'll be a great program, and I'm wishing you great success. And anyone that would like to get involved in it or learn more about it, please contact me through the board office, and I'll be happy to share this information with you. Another very worthwhile event Mr. Buckaloo alluded to earlier tonight is a fundraiser for the Champions Program of Wayne, and this fundraiser is going to be held at the Phoenix Theater, the State Wayne Theater, and what it, the movie Willie will be shown, and for those of who, those of you who don't know what the movie is about, it's about the first African-American National Hockey League player back in 1958. And from what I understand, it's an exceptional movie. That movie will be screened at the theater that evening. Tickets for this event are $54.50, I think. They're available online. The event is Wednesday night, so if you're interested in this, through the board office, you can contact me, and I will send you a link. You can purchase the tickets online, and it begins at 5:30 this coming Wednesday night, the 25th. A gentleman came up tonight, and he asked about the superintendent and what are we doing? What we are doing as a Board of Education is precisely what we said we were going to do. We are going to handle this entire situation professionally with respect for all persons involved, and currently, the matter is being handled by the district attorney fitfully. Because it's being handled by the attorney, it would be counterproductive for me to make comments about it. I'll only say that the board has anticipated the district's need, and we will be filling the need in the district when it arises. And with respect to resolution, everybody's concentrated on one thing right now, and it's Vanessa Raiapell and all her classmates in school. That's what we're concerned about, and that's what we're worried about, that's what's happening, and the other business of the district will be handled in due course. And to say more than that, I think, would be counterproductive. Mr. Buckaloo, you want a second bite at the apple?
Well, you mentioned the district attorney. That's the Wayne Westland Community Schools, our district's attorney, not a legal definition of a criminal prosecutor.
You've been watching NCIS or something.
Well, I know, I'm leaving here.
When I say district, I'm not talking about the district attorney.
Nor should anyone leave here with that interpretation.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo.
Also noticed that you called it the Phoenix. Was that 1932 when you were...
Listen, excuse me, Dr. Oldtimer.
Most concerned.
Most of my, Mrs. Walker, support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.